Meeting is being reconvened, waiting for people to come back in from the hall.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Waldrick, and I'm registered here in the Lexus Truck Center. This truck stop is located in Deering County. We are a outbrush truck stop. We've been there for years. So, I hear everything about, you know, this truck stop coming to town, and what it's going to do to the community or whatnot. Well, I have a different part about it. I went over the economic report, which the city asked to have done. And there's 75 jobs that were proposed to come into Pilot, but now it's cut down to 48. They are dropping out, and they sit down right now. So, they're just going to have a convenience store and some way. So, that means 48 jobs for our community, which is great. You know, jobs are great in this town. But, that's a difference of 27 jobs that we're going to come in. So, leases has 24 full-time employees. And they're proposing 24 full-time employees. So, if we have to think about the small businesses in town. So, let's say leases does close down, there's a good possibility it does. Because that would be three truck stops in our small town. One might get pushed out, and that could possibly be us. So, for 48 jobs, 24 of them are full-time, we have 24. So, that cancels each other out. Okay? There's another cop, they might be wrong or right, about this rebate, about the utilities going across the freeway. So, that would have all of the grocery receipts coming from Pilot, going right back, instead of the grocery receipts going to our community, it's going to go back to Pilot to pay for the utilities. They said maybe about the eight years that would take. So, if leases was shut down and closed, that would be eight years of grocery receipts. That would mean we wouldn't be getting leases, and now they're not getting from Pilot. So, there's eight years of grocery receipts that we're not getting at all in our community. And I think, you know, that brings some concerns up. So, there's 21 part-time jobs. Part-time is anything under 40 hours a week. And in a truck stop, that's usually 16 hours a week. So, with everyone on about 21 part-time jobs, it's going to be great or whatnot. But, it's not going to be in our community. You know, the employees that worked for leases had been working there for, most of them have been working there for six years. So, that's a steady income in our community, and they turn around and spend their paycheck in the cost of it in our community. So, everyone, I see these big truck stops coming into small communities, taking out the small truck stops, the mom-and-pops. And I'm afraid that it's not going to hurt only leases, but it's going to hurt everybody on Main Street. I haven't heard anyone have too much say about any of the small businesses in town. We are mostly small businesses in town. Everywhere from the mom-and-pop restaurants, apparel shops. We have a food, we already use it small. So, if everything is getting pulled off on the freeway and rerouted north, where there's only going to be one business there, back on the freeway, nothing's really going to go down Main Street. All my truckers, they get off, they have to go through Main Street to get back on. Or, they have to get down the second line of town and go up, which is going to be extremely busy now, considering the traffic flow through, off the freeways now from this main truck stop on that overpass bridge. So, I see some concerns about grocery receipts getting lost in our community all the way down. If leases had to close the Napa Lakes, the Grill, anything east of the line is going to suffer. The two auto shops, eastern town is going to die. It really is, right now we are suffering. Any paths, the stoplight going east, there's hardly any businesses there, it is. So, I would, you know, if this would happen, it would hurt everyone. We're just running out of traffic and putting it on the north side of the freeway. The last three years for our community has been pretty rough. The economy has been rough. You see businesses closing every month. Little small businesses come into our community for a few months, six months, and they close. You know, I try to spend as much as I can and back into our community. That's what happens. We try to support each other. So, I'm not quite sure what's going to happen. I know it's going to grab some jobs. This report is saying that the job displacement is only going to be eight. Eight? I mean, how do they figure that out? Eight? We have 24. So, there's a good possibility that it's going to be higher than that. And now, the new numbers coming in, they're going to have to revise this report, and it seems going to be low. So, it's going to look really good, but it's really not going to be good. It's just, I think it's going to be a lot of loss in our community. Let's see. I've done some numbers. I'm not a professional engineer. I'm not some capitalist or anything like that. But, there's several flying J's or pilots in New Mexico, mostly on I-40 or I-10 freeway towns. We're a freeway town. So, there is a pilot on Nine Mile Hill. It's extremely busy, I don't know if anyone's been there. I called up the managers, and I talked to the one on Chicken Carri and in Almeria. Their numbers blew me away. Remember, we don't get grocery receipts out of diesel. So, these numbers, they're really high, but it doesn't mean anything to us. And I might be wrong, and I'm sure he's going to judge me on it, but this is the way I got it. Chicken Carri pumps roughly 75,000 gallons a day. 75,000 gallons a day. So, if you divide that into 150 gallons, that's an average fuel up for a semi, 900 miles. That's 500 semis a day in that facility. Okay? And I'm going to talk about the bridge here, again, I'm not an engineer. But, back to this, that's 20 trucks an hour, okay? It pumps roughly 4,000 gallons of gas a day, which I thought was a little low. That's 15 gallons average for a vehicle, for a pickup or a car. That's 266 cars a day. 11 an hour. 31 total an hour. These are semis. You know, semis are very large. You could probably do four semis to one car. So, when I talk about semis, I'm breaking it down into cars. Because one semi is going to be way larger than a car. So, Albuquerque numbers, that, what I'm figuring, you know, a good figure for that is, let's put Pilot in the majority overflow. So, Pilot in Albuquerque will tell them there's a pilot here, so there will be a 45, you know, 15 minute wait just to fuel up. Anyone's been on Nine Mile Hill? It's 10 trucks, 15 trucks long just to get diesel. These guys are losing precious time. The companies are, you know, not wanting them to sit around a truck stop that long just to get fuel. At least, it takes 10 to 15 minutes to fuel. They're very small, small trucks comparing these numbers. They come in, they fuel, they get something to eat, or they don't, and they're on their way. So, let's say we have a truck stop somewhere central of these. The traffic on that bridge is just going to be at a standstill at all times. People coming out, and people getting on. It's just going to be, the numbers are going to be very overwhelming for that overpass and bridge. So, I'm going to say that three-fourths of that business is going to be semis. That report was saying 3,500 vehicles coming that, over that overpass bridge a day. Vehicles, is that semis? Is it cars? Because there's a difference between a vehicle and a commercial vehicle. So, let's say that three-fourths of that is going to be semis. So, that's 2,625 semis, break that down into cars, it's going to be now 10,550 cars going over that bridge. Okay? And 875 of left of that, 3,500 is going to be cars. So, the total over that bridge, not the pass bys, is 11,445 roughly over that bridge a day. Of course, I'm breaking those semis into cars. If we take 12% overflow from the Pilot on Nine Mile Hill and 12% of the Pilot at Chicken Carri's overflow, the companies can tell these guys, "Hey, it's too busy in Chicken Carri, way too busy on Nine Mile Hill." Now, reroute to Almeria. So, let's say we take 12% from Pilot in Nine Mile, 12% from Chicken Carri. That's an extra 200 cars, 200 semis from both of those places. Which cars, we're breaking down into four, that's roughly another $1,084 cars going through there. Just to bunch all these figures together, because it's mine, it really, really is. 12,709 divided by 24 hours a day. This is not peak hour, this is just divided per hour. Of course, you know, at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, they're not going to have this money. But, so, if you divide that number, it's 529 vehicles an hour. Remember, I'm breaking semis down into four cars, because that's how long they are. So, every 60 minutes, there's going to be 8.8 cars per minute, which is every 15 seconds, there's going to be a vehicle leaving or returning from that pilot. That is a lot. Just two heads coming out of the parking lot with a stop sign, you know, with a stop sign. They need stoplights. If this is going to happen, this is going to take a lot more than a stop sign or a, you know, extra turn lane or whatnot. Like Mr. Mills was saying, the bridge is going to have to be redone. I mean, it's crazy. So, with my numbers comparing to, you know, the, what our business is going to lose, and leases could lose 25 or 40, so that's what we're going to give us, part-time employees in this community, we have to think in the long run, is it really worth it? You know? And the noise, someone brought up the noise. I'm at a truck stop, I know about the noise. Leases was there. Before it was leases, it was tech open in the 70s. The community behind us built knowing that they were there. The noise, the odor, everything. But, they're proposing that they're going to somehow regulate the noise. There's 22 states that have a law passing that they can't run at night, or they can't run at this track, and New Mexico isn't one. So, yeah, noise, you know, the odor and everything is bad, the noise, but leases was here before, and if they're setting up and saying that they're going to control it, they should control it. But, and another thing I have is the property directly west of the location belongs to Mike Canary and Ralph Anaya, parents of Steve and I, which is on the board. He's an active member of the city council, and I think that that is a conflict of his vote. So, you know, I am requesting that Mr. Anaya excuse himself from the vote, because even though it's not his property now, in the future it could possibly be. So, if that's any concern to me too, decline that bottom wire fence, it's Anaya's property. If that's not a conflict of the vote, I don't know what is. So, with that said, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any questions from, any questions for, I'm going to have from Mr. Mills. Any questions from the county?
I just have a couple. I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
You can call me Mel.
Mel? Great. Call me Dale. Mel, you had come up, correctly come on, you had come up with, coming to the Pilot, 12,500 trucks are there about, correct? Or, on combination of vehicles?
Vehicles.
12,500 vehicles a day coming to Pilot?
Yes.
Okay. Mel, would you believe me if I told you there was only 25,000 trucks, or sorry, 25,000 vehicles on I-40 that pass through Moore already a day?
This is my condo. Remember, I wrote it down.
Okay. There's only 25,000 total vehicles coming through. That has to come through the whole interstate. I would have to get 50% of those to come off and come to my travels.
Okay.
Okay, so, I understand a little bit of logic, but I don't think it quite holds true to that. There's actually, there's 25,000 vehicles, 27% of them are trucks, and that's by New Mexico Department of Transportation. Now, you had felt that if Pilot came in, you were going to go out of business?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Who's your main competitor today?
That is TA.
That is TA. And do you own a truck or something?
I don't.
Who owns a truck or something?
The 9/11, she lives in Cotton, Arizona.
Okay, okay, so 9/11, does she own a lot of trucks?
No.
This is the only one. So, she doesn't buy a lot of fuel, correct?
No, I buy all of it.
You buy all the fuel. And you're competing against TA?
Right.
They buy a lot of fuel, right?
Yes, I know.
Yeah, there's like 300 TAs nationwide, right?
Correct.
Yeah, they buy a lot of fuel. So, how are you staying in business today up against TA? Who's a large competitor?
Right. You guys are a large competitor also. So, I'm afraid two big truck stops will squeeze out a small.
All right, well, give yourself some credit. Tell me how you stay in business today. Because I can tell you, you're not buying anywhere close to TA.
No, I'm not buying anywhere close to TA.
Right. So, tell me how you're staying in business today.
Well, we are mostly independent drivers.
Okay. Okay, now, I heard you, when you were talking, you called them your drivers or your truckers. Okay. Why do they think they come there? Why would they hire TA?
Well, they come here because they like us, but it's not that. You know what it is? When you come in with your fuel price, they're going to go where it's cheaper. Right now, we are busy, because we're cheaper than your Pilot, and Almeria, and the one in TA.
Okay. So, leases, they come here for a couple things. You're right, your client is the independent driver.
Yes.
No doubt. And I can tell you why he comes to your site, because he likes you in the primaries. Okay? He's not getting any break going to TA, because he's not a company guy. He pays the same price as TA. So, why doesn't TA just wake up one morning and just decide to put you out of business? Because TA could, I mean, they could drive, the price doesn't sense, and they'd put you out of business. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sure they've tried, but do, I think, what my concern is two truck stops in a small, three truck stops in a small town.
Okay.
It's a big concern.
Okay. How many of the, how many of those trucks that come right out of this town go to TA?
Out of this town?
Yeah, out of this town. How many trucks are in this?
It depends what the fuel price is, I'm sure.
Okay, now, how many trucks are in this town?
I don't know.
You got any trucking companies in this town?
Yeah, we do. I, my, my, one.
Big ones?
No, not big ones. We have small ones.
I can tell you, TA is not here because of the trucks that come out of Moore already.
Right, I'm not concerned about the trucks that come out of Moore already.
And I can tell you that you're not going to be worried about me coming in either, because I'm not in the, I'm not in the business of coming in and putting you out of business. Why would I do that? And I'm not, because my price is going to be the same as it is in Chicken Carri, and it is in Albuquerque. You already told me you're less than that.
But, that's your credit price, it's not your cash price.
No, that's my credit and cash price.
No, you have to make a move.
I do. But, we flash, but we post our cash price.
Right.
Okay. So, that's our lowest price. Okay, so, again, my whole thing is, trust me, if you were going to go out of business, you'd have gone out of business with TA.
You've been here before TA, so that's the problem, okay?
I, I, trust me, no driver waits after goes, "Well, just because leases was here this morning, I'm going to go there first because of TA." They come here because of your customer service. They get no better price for it, okay?
Let's try to get in the phrase, I'm always questioning your question.
Okay. All right. So, on that point, would you agree that that's why you're in business? Because your customer service?
I would hope so.
Okay. All right. Are you, if I come into town, you're going to change that customer service, you're going to one day wake up and just decide, "I'm not going to treat these guys as good as I'm treating today"?
No, but why don't you guys have the same customer service?
Well, we have good customer service.
I'm just saying, you said that, so...
We do have good customer service. We cater, we mainly cater to the professional driver.
Not the independents.
Not the independents. And so, and a lot of independents, they would prefer, because they don't get any price rate. We'll probably be higher priced than you. Okay? So, if, let me put it this way, if I'm the same price as you, or I'm priced higher than you, the independents, where are they going to go?
To me, I'm helping.
I would agree. I would not disagree with that at all.
But, see, what you guys do is you guys get contracts, you know, so you undercut us, we're going to push a hole.
What national companies do you give?
UPS, FedEx.
Okay. Those guys are LTLs, and they're fueling, if they are, they're fueling there because they've got some kind of agreement with you. Because I can tell you, if you're fueling National Accounts, the Snyder's and all those, they're on direct bill with us, okay? They're not going to let their driver run into your facility, okay? You're going to go after the independent, and he's coming there because he wants to come there.
Right.
And my contractor is not really supposed to throw a question at the boss.
Actually, can we just take that away from his time?
Sure, you can take it away from my time.
It's fine, it's fine, it's fine.
Okay. But, I'll end here, but trust me, the reason people are coming is because you provide great customer service, and they want to come.
But, this is a mom-and-pop town, okay? The big box that wanted to come in and just, obviously do something to our community. No? No? You don't want to help us?
No, I do.
Oh, okay.
I want to offer jobs, I want to, and, but remember, most of my traffic is traffic-free.
This is very, I'm having time for presentations, this is kind of getting into breaking down...
You're fine.
Questions from council. I'm sorry. Let's just start everyone in.
Yes, you were coming about this truck stop, if it exists, they'll get off the freeway and right back on the freeway and not go through town.
Yes.
Okay? Am I understanding you correct? As an example, if somebody's going east of the freeway, they can get off the freeway right at your truck stop, and get right back on the freeway right at your truck stop going east. They don't have to go through town.
Right.
If somebody's going west, they can get off the freeway right at your truck stop, and only have to go to this traffic light, and then to the bridge to get back on the freeway going west.
That's correct.
So, they would only, if they're going west, they'd only have to go through half of the town. If they're going east, they wouldn't have to go through any of the town to get out of, in other words, it would be, except for that half of town going west, it would be the same scenario as you pointed out as being disappetuous for if the flying J is there. Is that correct?
Well, it's a flying J.
A flying J, yeah.
And what's going to happen is they're going to go north, right? So, they're not, I'm talking about the new traffic, or the traffic that's getting pulled off the freeway. So, they're going north, going to the new pilot, and then they're going right back on the bridge, and then they're going west or east without going back on Route 66. That's what concerns me.
Okay, I thought, I thought your concern was that they would not have to go through town, and therefore hurt the business.
No, they wouldn't go through town, because they already gave one back on the bridge to go left or right.
All right. The next question I have, if I may, if, I want to wait until both people have presented their case, because the question is kind of uniform for all people. Is that all right?
So, is the question for both parties?
Yeah.
The other, the other party has already testified, and has already been up there for examination, so...
I can only ask the question of the...
And...
Okay. I need to recap a little bit to make sure I'm not thinking wrong. Susan?
You may ask the question.
These conditions, conditions, eleven, they were originally written by staff, correct? Not by PNC today. In other words, this is staff's suggestion as to what staff thinks the condition should be.
Yes, the conditions made reviewing the ordinance.
All right, then, I'll take the next step up in my head. Our PNC ordinance says that this use is permitted in that zone. Right?
Yes.
Okay. In the table of land uses, it says there was a C instead of an X. But, the C does not mean that it may or may not be permitted. The C means it may or may not have additional conditions. So, PNC's job was not to decide whether flying J should or should not be there. PNC's, PNC's job was to decide what additional conditions should be put on them, if any, and whether or not they should be staff's suggestions on conditions. But, the use of the land is permitted in that zone. Okay? My question then is, first of all, I don't see anything in the PNC ordinance that addresses competition.
Right.
So, so, I want to ask you, as an example, when the last restaurant went into, into business in Almeria, do you think that it would have been appropriate for another restaurant to say, "Wait a minute, I don't want that restaurant, because it's going to take business away from my restaurant"? Do you think that would have been appropriate had it happened? Okay, thank you. I don't think that, all right, then my last question is, is there any other conditions besides these 11 that you think could solve these problems? And the ordinance says that the conditions have to mitigate the problem. The definition of mitigate is more moderate or less severe. So, the definition of mitigate is not to remove or to eliminate, it is to make things more moderate or less severe. Do you have any suggestions of additional conditions that would help to solve the problems you're presenting?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Mel, I just got one question. Well, maybe, maybe I have a couple questions.
Okay.
Right across the street from us, correct?
Yes.
You see a car through?
Yes.
And I'm listening to what you're saying is that if it's on the north side of the interstate, they don't need any reason to come through town?
Yes.
In your opinion, and I didn't want to show it, in your opinion, would it make any difference if that truck stop was at 41 north of the interstate, or if that truck stop was right next door to you?
It'd be great if it was right next door to me, because there'd be more traffic right in front of my facility, because those guys might want to pull in to my facility to see there's no lines, because not 100% of those guys are contacted with either flying J. So, they might not even know we exist. There is room when we set it down. I'm not, "No, they're not coming in, they shouldn't come in." I believe if it'd be in a different location, that it might actually melt my business on the same day.
So, with that comment, as you stated to Councilor Shennfield, if another, if another restaurant came in, you couldn't, you couldn't see anything, but if no one came in, what you're saying is, if no one came in in a different location?
Right.
You wouldn't have an issue with it?
Wouldn't have issues.
All right, thanks.
Now that I know, I can ask both parties a question. I feel both.
We can ask another party question, until they've made their purchase, then we can cross the line.
In your appeal, Mel, you stated under...
In, in your appeal, Mel, you stated under item five, that you felt that the property value would go up in that area. Can't read it or be much specific. Can you elaborate on that?
On my account number five?
Yes, ma'am.
About the Nias?
Yes.
Okay. The property directly west of the hill, okay, belongs to the owner's parents, person's parents. The city improvement will boost the property value as there is no city water, sewer there now. This report created a cancel, both conflict, all, all relatives of the people benefiting with the positive increase in property value should excuse themselves from the approval vote.
With that said, you're, you're stating that you feel that the property value is going to go up?
For commercial properties? For any, yes, I agree.
And as I ask Mr. Mel, I'll ask you the same question. Do you have any?
I don't have any evidence, but it's, it's pretty obvious. If there's water or sewer there, then it's for your properties or any property in the city that it's more of a like. And we use yourself.
Opinion, no, it's not.
It's an opinion, yes.
And then with that also, um, you were saying that you, you estimated that, I believe it was eleven thousand four hundred vehicles would, would pass through that intersection on a daily basis?
Yes.
Did you take any consideration, slow traffic, uh, pumpkin, uh, time of the year, or is it causing that?
No.
Which traffic studies have never been done?
Right.
Either one of those. So none of that has been taken into consideration?
Mel, in your testimony, you stated that, um, the flying J and Tucan Carry and one of the nine mile hill, um, they had, you know, pretty high capacity of, of vehicles going through per day. Does flying J may pick up some of that overflow?
Yes.
Are there other truck stops in Tucan Carry besides the flying J, or are they just the sole provider there?
No, I believe there's one more, I believe there's a TA.
Is there?
There, there is two. Yes, one. On the left, yes.
And then, and nine mile hill, is there more than one?
No, nine mile hill's pretty.
How far in proximity is that?
No, nine mile hill's pretty much right.
Is it that's up? Okay, thank you.
What is, what's your title there, Lisa?
Manager.
And you mentioned you have twenty-four full-time employees. Are you, you running twenty-four seven?
Yes, twenty-four seven.
And of the twenty-four employees, how do you break that down? How many are the fuel and how many are the rest?
We, uh, per shift, I can break that down pretty easy for you, per shift. We have one cashier. One fuel man for maintenance. One waitress. We have, uh, four people in the restaurant. And myself. Twenty-four hours a day, so that's three times a day.
And on the, on the grocery seats tax, what do you, to, you don't pay grocery seats tax on the diesel?
No.
So what do you pay grocery seats tax?
Um, we pay that, and you have a C store or a restaurant. And you do not have gas.
Any other questions from counsel? Questions from the counsel?
Mel, I'd like to ask you just a few questions. One, because I'm not really sure that I understood some of the questions and some of the testimony as it relates to the competition. Are you against business competition?
No.
And in terms of, I, I think it was the competition for the economics, I think is, is the word that was being used. Let me, let me read something to you. And it comes from the Zobein ordinance. The economic, and these are factors that the ordinance provides, planning is only has to consider. The economic nor is there order effects of the conditional use on adjoining properties. The economic. Does that indicate to you that economics is part of the consideration that this council should take when determining whether this project should be approved?
Yes.
Let me read something else to you, and this is again from the Zobein ordinance. Factors that planning is owning, the council should consider. Any other matters, now repeat, any other matters applicable to the property in question? Is the survival of businesses within Moriarty something that this council should consider?
Yes, I think they should.
In your opinion, based on this language, is that something that is probably a factor for consideration?
Yes.
Now, trust me. I want to ask you a question. Have you ever bought any property?
Yes.
Was it a development?
Yes.
I happen to ask you, homes of property in Moriarty that I own over the internet, and it's way out in the middle of nowhere. Wonderful town, wonderful town, but it's way out in the middle of nowhere. No gas, no sewer, no water, no electricity, but I got it for a great price. In the property that you bought, whenever you looked at buying a property, are you willing to pay more for property that's developed?
Yeah, I guess I would.
If you're talking about commercial property, I mean, yes, we know it's just your opinion, and we don't necessarily want to deal with the obvious. God forbid that opinions should be evidence, but isn't it just common sense that commercial property that has water, sewer, electricity is more valuable than commercial property that is not?
Absolutely.
I mean, we can take several factors into consideration. If you're talking about commercial property, you know, that's fifty miles outside of town, in the middle of nowhere, even if that one was developed, it's probably not valuable, as valuable as commercial property that's developed on, I've already fronted. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Do you know of anybody that would dispute that fact?
I, I don't think there would be anyone that would.
Thank you, no further questions?
Anything else from Lisa Trupstop?
No.
At this point, is the applicant ready to proceed with his case? If there is, there'll be for break for, is there a question? Or is that all? Any objections for one additional question?
No.
Mel, who, who was there first, the Lisa Trupstop or Ted's?
Ted's.
Before the subdivision next to you? So, so Ted's was built, and then behind it was the subdivision that was built.
Yes.
What, what's, conditions did Ted put on protecting the subdivision that was next to it?
No.
No condition?
No. There is a wall there now, but, uh, that was cut out.
So was there any homes built there at the time?
No.
So now there's homes, do you know how many homes?
I don't. It's, um, ask Mr. Ryan, I believe it's his property.
So I, I'm going to take a guess, and somebody can probably correct me if I'm wrong, and say, how many homes?
I, I actually don't, I have the objection, Mr. Ryan, I have something to say, how many cars there are, and how many homes there are, and how many are over now, I have no objection.
There is a lot of vacant homes back there. And it does take a long time to let them sell. I know that.
But at the time Ted was built, and the economy was growing, homes did get built in a soul. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to proceed to, the applicant's case in queue. Fifteen minutes to listen to the other applicant.
Okay. Thank you very much. What I thought I'd do is I'd just sort of adapt the appeal and just present our information there. First of all, there was questions about the traffic study, traffic study not provided. In, in your pack, there is a traffic study submitted to the Mexico Transit, the Department of Transportation on October eighteen. I'm going to ask, if it's okay, I would ask, uh, did you get twenty? Are you ready to hand it over?
Are you going to, uh, everybody speak now? Go ahead and read it right now. Do you affirm that the test that I did would be the truth?
I did.
Terry, would you just explain real quickly, in just a couple of minutes, the traffic study, what you did, and the end results, and then your communications with the VOT would be correct? Contacted you directly with the consultant?
Yes, that's correct. At the onset of the study, I contacted the guy named Ruben Garcia, he's a professional engineer, he's the District Five Traffic Engineer with the New Mexico Department of Transportation. We discussed the scope of the study. I do not yet to determine the scope of the study. I just explained the conditions, explained the project to him, uh, and, and he says, here's what you're going to study. And he defines the scope of the study. So I have to comply with, not only with, he defines the scope of the study, but I have to comply with the requirements for traffic impact study in the New Mexico Department of Transportation, state access, many of them. So, uh, I have complied with those requirements, and there's been a couple of rounds of comments where Ruben commented, and there were minor comments, and I complied with them. And I got an email from him this morning that said he had no further comments, I just submitted the file.
Okay, and did, and did you address, uh, did, what are the three ma, just give me the three major things that they want us to do. And also, there was talk about suicide lane. I did not see a suicide lane on the.
Yeah, there is no lane, there is no third lane across the bridge, no suicide lane being proposed. But there were requirements, uh, when we do the traffic impact study, we, uh, we analyze the before and after conditions at the intersections that Ruben stipulated in scope.
I think I want to check, I mean, given, um, Mr. Mulga's previous concerns regarding hearsay, this witness is telling us what somebody at the state told him. That's interesting.
I have an email on my iPhone right now, I can show you.
Yeah, that doesn't make it not interesting. It's still something, it's somebody, it's a matter of court statement.
It's an email from Ruben Garcia.
I apologize, now you're talking to an attorney, I, I bug you. Hearsay is an out of court statement often to prove the truth of the matter, sir. The email is an out of court statement, and I understand you're not in court, but that would still be hearsay because you're saying it's Ruben. I have never met Ruben, don't know Ruben, I can't verify the fact that it's from Ruben. I understand you're an honest man, I'm not saying it's dishonest, but that would suit me.
And I would, this is far as I can issue. I let you slide earlier when I heard you saying, you're saying I can get bother objections because you were quoting what somebody else has told you. This is, well, I mean, it's a little hard to get the district engineer down here, I'm not content.
Yeah, no, I understand your concerns, and, and I'll tell you what my concerns are. You referenced the traffic safety study.
Right.
And you told the capital, you took the materials we provided to you. I assume you gave us the same.
You have the same comment.
The problem with that is that the email that's in here says, it's misspelled, but it's essentially says I have no more comments. Where's the email with the comments? We don't have that. Even this email is hearsay, but if we had the comments, then we could at least look at them and decide, but they're showing. Here's the other concern. The materials that you provided to us, again, is testified by Mr. Mills, are incomplete. And so we don't have a copy of a complete traffic study. I can specifically point you to, point you to the items that are missing, but you can look at the exhibit and tell us if in fact items are missing, if you can, we do that. I'm going to ask you to do that.
And just, and, and your picture is noted, and we, you'll get an opportunity for cross-examination to test what he testified to. Counsel will have the opportunity to, to cross-examine, test what he's testified to, and counsel will be able to, to weigh, weigh the evidence that, that is coming in.
Is he testifying that what, because this is something that Mr. Mulga is, is he testifying that what has been submitted is the entire report?
We did not ask you that question.
That's not my question.
Hold on, hold on a second, hold on a second, hold on a second.
I just want to find out.
So you'll have the opportunity to ask that on cross-examination, sir.
Okay, so to ask the question, what, what are the results of the traffic?
You didn't rule on my search?
I didn't.
Yes, sir. Are you going to honor the testimony?
I'm going to allow it. And this is not a court of law, the council is fully able to, to weigh the evidence for what, and give it away if it is necessary and is inappropriate.
And the purpose of the traffic impact study is to determine the impact this development on adjacent transportation systems. So I analyzed the intersections, nearby intersections that Ruben directed me to analyze and determine that there were some impacts to some adjacent intersections, and that the intersection that was impacted was the intersection of Frontier Road and New Mexico State Road forty-one. Now, whenever we demonstrate an impact to an intersection, I have to make a recommendation for improvements to mitigate that impact, which I did. And that impact was mitigated by the construction of a northbound left turn lane on New Mexico State Road forty-one onto the Frontier Road. So we'll have to widen out State Road forty-one north of the bridge, we'll start widening it immediately north of the bridge to get in a third lane, but not across the bridge. And that third lane will be a northbound left turn lane, and it will be designed that during the design phase, in fact, when we designed it, we applied a truck turning template to the turn, and it goes at, it's designed so that it will facilitate, uh, N B sixty-two left turn and truck. And the other, uh, that was one improvement. The other two improvements required by the state were deceleration lanes into the east driveway and the west driveway of the project. Right, I said right turn and deceleration? Those are the improvements that will be required by the New Mexico Department of Transportation.
One more question for you. Mr. Mills, I'm honored that the, the common traffic work we had is not, because we, we there was, I believe all these is.
Right, right. Yes, uh, the traffic impact study is comprised of the front end text and then very large appendix. Here's the front end text, here's the appendix. Normally, when I submit to administrative staff and neighborhoods, I submit the front end text because that contains the non-technical part, assumptions, recommendations. So back end is technical data, unless you're training trucking this year, part of the understand most of it. And, and the email, it can, I stand in this entire appendix, it's about fifteen megabytes of files, it's too large for me.
Let me make sure that covers everything I have on. Um, maybe, I need to send to the other party, really, to set up, they had the opportunity for cross-examination, to be witness. At this point, if we expand it for cross-examination, are there questions by the counsel of this witness?
There is, but I actually need a small break.
Okay. And you have questions? Okay. Well, are you ready to proceed with your questions? Okay, let's go ahead, proceed with it, question. Take a brief break, and then.
It's not going to be long, right?
So what are the minor comments Mr. Garcia sent to you? Because we didn't see them.
I'm sorry, say that again.
In the email.
Oh, what, more of the minor comments?
Yes, I mean, I mean, he is our District Five, there's only minor comments on this huge project that's coming into our town, which is going to affect our bridge, which is not a flyover bridge, and he's only having minor comments? And we.
Well, reminder, because I, I've, I've been doing these traffic impact studies for more than twenty years, and I know what they expect. And when I submit a trial, I'm, I'm going to sound righodious, but when I submit these, I've been doing them long enough, I know what they expect, and I try to comply with that. One of his comments was, I didn't emphasize the fact that this was a truck stop enough, and I put additional language in there, and I told him, I thought looking at the site map, it'd be pretty obvious what it was. Uh, he asked me where I got the trip generation rate, because there is no, uh, trip generation rate for a truck stop in the I T D trip generation manual. And I told him that I used something close that costs nights, and, and actually is a little bit considerably high for what a truck stop would generate. There's a study in California that is a non-I T D approved study that shows that truck stops generate a little bit less traffic than what I've assumed in the traffic impact study. He also, he wanted me to, our truck. Uh, he also, he wanted me to apply truck turning templates to both ramps and all, all the turns, and I said, well, that's a design issue, we'll go ahead and do it, it's not part of the traffic impact study, and he agreed.
Okay, so, um, on your report, it says traffic impact study, New Mexico Travel Center. So Mr. Garcia didn't know what a travel center was, and he is our YOQ?
No, he didn't say that, he just said, I want you to put some language in here, it makes it real clear up front that this is a, a truck stop.
Travel center?
A track, well, a truck stop too.
Travel center, truck stop, that's the same.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, what is your ratio trucks compared to a semi? Like a standard vehicle, what is your ratio? One semi equals how many truck, cars in your report?
With regard to payment design?
No, length, length.
Oh, length, okay. Well, uh, I think a WB62 is sixty-two feet long.
So how many cars do you break that into a standard vehicle compared to a...
Well, that, that doesn't go into the traffic impact study.
Well, wouldn't that be important, because a semi is sixty-two feet, and a truck would be fifteen feet, there's a big difference?
Well, it, it goes into the QD calculations, okay, and those are in here.
Because I could...
But as far as capacity, the truck, the, the, the capacity issue is not linear with the length of the truck versus length of the car.
So you don't have any difference?
It's a different factor. But we apply a, uh, a capacity adjustment factor at signalized and unsignaled intersections to account for the trucks.
So 20 units, is that a vehicle, or is that a commercial vehicle?
I don't know what you're asking.
He's trying to...
He's the, he's the witness at this point, so...
Well, I mean, as soon as she asks, and she's starting to get at it.
Let her have a seat.
I can explain it to him.
Let her have a seat for a second.
Is semi sixty-two feet long on the trailer? Is that correct? Sixty-two feet long on the trailer?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so a vehicle is roughly fifteen feet long, there is...
About eighteen and twenty.
Okay, eighteen and twenty. So in your study, are these all regular vehicles turning into trucks?
No, no.
No? Okay. Can you tell me what...
How many trucks and how many vehicles?
Yeah, that's...
Well, in the, no, okay. In the, in the California study, it indicated at a truck stop that approximately 30 to 40 percent of the traffic was truck. I assume 50 percent in there is to be conservative of the top.
So what's the New Mexico study? You're saying that's California, so you just took it out of that?
No, no, I use the number higher than they give, but, but I could support 30 to 40 percent, in fact, everyone does support 30 to 40 percent.
Okay, so it's 30 to 40 percent in this study?
No, no, it's 50 percent.
Oh, 50, okay, so it's not, so that's right. And you said there was a third, um, you only gave us two. What's the third one? You said there was, there was three comments?
Well, the third one's applied truck turning templates, and I said, that's a design issue, we'll address that during design. We have, we have design, we're ninety-seven percent of design level on this project, and we've already applied truck turning templates and demonstrated that everything will work that we designed.
One more thing. You said that then there's, uh, three lanes, and then it widens into 41. How long does that lane go, and does it, does it end, or does it keep going?
Uh, north of the Frontier Road?
Your, your...
Well, when, when we widen out the, uh, when we widen out the pavement to create a northbound left turn lane, by default, we have to widen out the north side of the intersection, so we are gonna provide a southbound left turn lane as a courtesy, or as a, it's just by default, we end up with a pavement width anyway, so we're gonna put in a short southbound left turn lane.
So it's a turning lane?
And that wasn't, you know, and, and it will transition back in, uh, to a normal two-lane roadway, um...
How far, is that asking for it, or is it gonna be closer into the old steady states?
Where it actually finishes transitioning? Transition's right at, I think, just here past Pender Bay, one ten.
Okay, thank you.
So, let's see, we want to take a quick break to, to, or, do, any, any other questions? Okay, so take a quick break and then we'll cross examination.
I may be able to achieve this portion, I may be able to get done in time for my other business. May I proceed? Let me have you, uh, you, what, you said that, you are, you have now admitted that what you provided to the planning and zoning commission was not the complete, uh, traffic study, is that right?
It was the complete front end text, yeah. But it wasn't on the foot, the appendix.
Now, so how many of the appendices is not included?
Well, there's about a hundred and thirty-five pages in the appendix.
A whole lot, is the answer?
Yeah, a whole lot of pages, yes.
Yeah, a whole lot, and a whole lot of appendices. Are, are, are there, right?
Well, a whole lot of pages.
All right, how many appendices that you did not include? If you disagree with me that there were a whole lot that you did not include?
Yes.
Yeah. Or, you now again, there were a whole lot?
I understand this. Can I explain why I did that?
No, I understand, because computers couldn't handle, um, these files, right?
No, no.
Well, you said...
It's because it's, it's very technical data, unless you're a trained traffic engineer, you won't understand it.
We're not smart enough.
No, that's not what I said. Unless you're a trained traffic engineer, you won't understand this.
Well, isn't it just data?
It's data like, uh, PKR factors, you know, PKR factors, ORC ratios.
Let's look at your appendices, and you can tell us which ones are too complicated for us to, to understand, because we're not professionals.
I think it's crossing the line. No, no, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Please, you, you are, I hear the witness, please, uh, make your questions more formal and not, not, not in a way that is attempting to, to be a little of a cynical process.
I think the gentleman was saying he is smart enough to have understood the data. I think that the comments of, I didn't submit them because you're not a professional engineer, because my client, so I apologize. I'm an attorney, I work at the law school because they said there's no map on the test? I might have. But let me ask you a little question. Did you attach exhibit, uh, for appendix case seven?
I don't think so.
And that is a trip distribution map, is it not?
Right.
And now I would guess that the trip distribution map is simply, uh, a, a map that tells the reader where you were getting the individual trip numbers from, is that right?
Right.
And is that something that you think I've understood, or is that just...
Wait, that's, that's, you're, you're asking him to speculate as to what you might know or not know, so, so...
This gentleman was speculating as to why he didn't include all these exhibits, because the other people would have understood, it was a conflict.
Is, but, but you can, you're asking him about your state of mind.
Would that have been something that was too complicated for the planning and zoning commission to have checked? This map?
It's not self-explanatory, I mean, you, you could, I could explain to you pretty easily, you'd be able to understand it, but I've had a, I've been doing this...
No, not yet, no. Again, the objection was, I, I didn't want, you don't know the background.
Okay, I, I've been doing this for 20 years, and for 20 years, people have been saying, would you, would you send us a copy of the study? And there are large administrators and, and city councils and PPIs and kind of missions and neighborhoods. And I, I commonly ask them, do you want the whole study, or can I just submit the front end text? And almost without exception, they say, we've just sent us the front end text, that's all we care about.
Are you telling us that the planning and zoning commission only requested the front end text and not the data?
I'm not telling you that, I'm telling you that, it's been a practice of mine, it was a past experience that I did this, I didn't single out the city of Morier until October.
All right, let me go to my next question. Uh, trip assignments, entry, percentage entry, A9, was that included?
None of that for A6, or A, I don't know, about A3 or A4 was included.
We're just about to check the report, because we don't want you to get it. What was the last appendix that you had included?
Somewhere around A3 or A4.
You won't check?
I don't know, I don't know. I mean, this is the forward report, I don't know, it's so weird.
This is our demand. Let's just move on, or...
May I have a question, to give him a copy of what he submitted to, uh, financial?
Can I make a quick statement? This might help us come a little faster, if you don't mind.
Sure.
None of this was submitted to Kansas City, it did not come to the city of Morier until October 19th. Of course, the meeting, uh, that we're talking about, September, September 18th.
Thank you very much.
So that's what was submitted.
Okay, in that case, all my questions will be addressed through the city council. May I first submit this, what was submitted to the city council?
You may have a question.
Say a question.
Yes.
What's the question?
Uh, what was the last appendix that you submitted with this incomplete report to the city council?
This, this doesn't have an appendix.
Let me ask you what Mr. Mulligan gave me at the beginning of this, may I?
You may.
Okay, that goes through the appendix, A, it's, uh, papers on the... And that's probably because I generated it in the computer, but it's, it's the first year that it's been included.
So appendix one, did you include that?
Right, one, two, and three.
One, two, and three, so everything after that you omitted, right?
Yes.
And all of this is what you call the hard data?
Is this, is the, uh, the technical data is what I call it.
If somebody were to double-check your number, they would need that part of it.
Well, in fact, they did, yes. No, the state.
But nobody else?
Nobody else.
And in terms of the comments that the state gave you, the only thing we have is your testimony of what they said.
Right now, I have it, right?
Yes. In terms of the vehicle count that you came up with on page two of the report, I need just a question to analyze, if, um, not less, what's the 3,447 number being under the trip generation?
That's the number of trips that this facility will generate today. Not, not the number, not the number of trucks. A truck generates two trips, or a car, one entering and one exiting, so, so 3,447 trips is half that number of vehicles.
Half that number of vehicles. So 1,243 and a half.
1,700.
1,700, see, I told you about that. And 50 percent of those are trucks?
Possibly, yeah.
So how many of them were trucks?
Half of 1,700, about 800, maybe 50.
And that would mean how many need for cars?
Two and eight.
Which is what?
About same amount.
Um, does that, your report did not include pass-by trips, right?
That's correct.
And, and so you come to the end of why not?
Well, because, uh, a pass-by trip is a reduction in this number of 3,447, it's not an increase. If I were to take, say, for example, a 10 percent pass-by reduction, I would subtract 3,45 trips from this 3,447. And I would, I would take that reduction and apply it to the off-site intersections, and then add those pass-by trips back into the drive-thru. So by not taking the pass-by trip reduction, we're even further providing a conservatively high analysis.
All right, well, is that going to tell us where these 3,000, what, how many whole vehicle was it?
3,447. Whole vehicle, whole vehicle, seventeen, seventeen hundred and twenty-four.
Seventeen hundred and twenty-four, can you tell us how many of those just came off of the street? I'll provide for each of them.
Okay, are we gonna get into all the different percentages of this? Is that what you want?
No, sir, I just wanted to know if you could tell us how many of those 1,724 came off of East or Westbound 40?
I don't have that number in my flag in my report, I mean, I'll sit here and go through and calculate each one ahead and have, you know, estimate it, but your, I don't know, I don't know the purpose of this, I guess, what's the purpose of all this?
Yeah, I apologize, I think I asked a question, but I don't want to tell you. I think you've already testified as to the effect of this truck stop on the businesses within Morier, right? You've been here throughout this whole year.
Mm-hmm.
You've heard that testimony, right? I'm just trying to see, because there's questions in terms of the reliability of people's opinions, and whether or not there's hard evidence, and you only have information that is really just an opinion, because it shares, but because it's written form, some people might think it's hard evidence, and I'm trying to understand if any of this information supports the opinions that have been generated by others. So 1,724 vehicles, how many of those came off of Highway 40 into East or Westbound? Never from the city?
Okay, about 15 percent.
About 15 percent of those came off of the freeway, right? That would mean that 85 percent actually came from the city?
Yep.
And so how many vehicles were dropped?
Uh, some came from the north, we've got about seven, I think, some from the north.
Seven percent from the north. All right, that's, uh, 22 percent? 15 percent is 22? That would mean 78 percent of that traffic came from Morier.
68.
68? I'm telling you, now, so how many vehicles is that?
Well...
You're an engineer, right?
I can't do it in my head, I have to do it...
You don't have a calculator?
No, I'm, I'm, I was going hard, I like home, but...
So about, what about vehicles came from Morier?
Are you telling or asking?
No, I'm not.
I can't, I can't play it out, that, that sounded pretty close, okay?
And you didn't include pass-by trips, right?
You're not.
What's the vehicle traffic over the bridge of New Mexico 41?
Today? Current, current traffic today over New Mexico 41 is about 4,000 trips today, or 4,000 vehicles today.
Mr. Mills specified it was 4,900, and I see 2,008, I didn't read it into the street traffic.
Yeah, I'm looking at the NDOT publication, it says 2,011, 2,164.
4,000, 4,164.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a substantial amount more than the 68 percent you have, right?
No, maybe, that's not a comparative number, mine was a different number.
Yeah, your, your number is, is how much traffic is coming in to that truck stop from Morier, right?
Right.
Now, I've been on here a couple of times, the only way to get to that truck stop from Morier is to go over the bridge. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
I mean, you could go around, you could go all the way to the flyover on the west end, right? You could go all the way over to the flyover on the east end, right?
Yes.
But in terms of the numbers that you were calculating here, this 68 percent reflects only those vehicles coming over the bridge and New Mexico 41, is that right?
True, right.
Which is only 68 percent of 1724, right?
Okay, well, okay, yes.
But you just, the total traffic, uh, by the 2,011 count, over that bridge, it means 4,100 to change.
Okay, that's not our traffic, that's not pilot's traffic, that's the traffic that's there today. If you go out there and do it down today, it's 4,000, uh, about 4,200, let's say.
I understand, 4,000, but that's traffic that wasn't included, no, traffic wasn't included in this number of traffic, right?
It shouldn't be. We, we take the existing traffic, we add the traffic, we're gonna generate 1,700, so you have 4,200 plus 1,700, and you have, you have about 6,000, uh, vehicles a day across the bridge. That bridge should carry 11,000 to 13,000 without problem.
Are you familiar with bridge design?
I'm familiar with lane capacity.
Well, I mean, you're, you're talking about that bridge being able to handle.
That's right. Capacity, what is the capacity of us, I'm not speaking as a structural engineer, I'm speaking from capacity. A two-lane roadway will carry eleven to thirteen thousand vehicles a day.
And you're familiar with that design of the bridge and the road that we have?
I'm familiar with two-lane, the, the capacity of roadways, yes.
And how many lanes are needed?
For, for this project?
Sure, for this project?
Two. Two.
So you are saying how many lanes are needed for this part?
Yes.
Okay, and in fact, we did, that provides that, now, also, we're just taking on that one. You were going to widen I four immediately north of the bridge?
Correct.
That, that is, right?
Correct.
And the bridge is only two lanes?
Yes.
But when you widen I four immediately north of the bridge, you're going to add one, what, you're going to add...
Eventually, eventually, you got, north of the bridge, we start to widen, transition out to make room for that new left turn.
I, I, I understand, I understand, you're going to north of the bridge, a southbound turn, right?
That's turn I four, I'm forty-one, that's turn I four, yes.
And that southbound left turn lane is going to be for traffic that turns east on the front?
Yes.
Let me read some to you and ask you if you agree with this proposition. In determining roadway horizontal appearances, the full width of the approach roadway should be maintained across the entire structure. Would you agree with that?
Read that again.
In determining, and I don't mind telling you where it's from. Bridge procedures are designed to address the problems that... In determining roadway horizontal appearances, horizontal being condition, right? In determining roadway horizontal appearances, the full width of the approach roadway should be maintained across the entire structure.
Right.
Would you agree with that?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
If you've got three lanes on one side of the bridge, but the bridge is only two lanes, you're violating that particular provision, aren't you?
No, sir.
It is what it is. I read it right, you read it right?
Yes, you did. But you interpreted it...
Then you agree something else. The bridge is a small part of the continuous roadway and should be designed with the same cross-section dimensions as the roadway. Would you agree with that?
Uh, I'd have to read that in context, I don't sound right, because you have, you have transitions... Well, I'm just telling you, I, I, I have to read a lot, hell.
It doesn't mean that...
What's, what's that, or something like that.
So at that point, you don't know what you're...
Just read out in context, that doesn't sound right, it doesn't sound like there's something missing.
Okay. In that case, why don't we, uh, make this an exhibit and we'll give it to the council when they can read it? Just for the record, I'll be reading from page one dash six, section one point three point four, bridge width. Uh, yeah, oh, no, I checked.
So then, this would be, and the next is the first, help. Any other questions in this particular board? Any other questions, Mr. Flores?
I have no, can't be sure, I have a few... Yeah, I do have just a couple of, you can step in for me if you would, this is one of those areas where you can actually explain something to us, because I really don't know what you mean.
Okay, great.
It is under the section implementation or results of unsignalized intersection capacity analysis, right?
Well, I've got different pages here, I've got, uh, mine...
This is the exhibit that your client provided to you, quote. The standard that the group provided for your final...
Okay, got it, uh-huh.
Results of unsignalized intersection capacity analysis?
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell us what the table on that paper presented?
Well, it is a lot of information, uh, it, it is the, uh, it's a summary table that's intended to summarize the A M and P M P R, no build level service delay and the A M and P M build condition level service delay.
For twenty fourteen?
For twenty fourteen, that's correct.
And so what is the first column on that document, okay?
That's the, uh, first column is the eastbound, northbound, southbound, E B, and W, that's the direction of the approach.
And so are these actual counts that you took?
No.
How was the information derived in this paper on that?
Well, it was, okay, it was based on accounts that I took, but we, uh...
Exactly.
We grew those counts, uh, to, because the counts I took were two thousand twelve counts, these are two thousand fourteen volumes. So we grew the traffic for two years and analyzed it for two thousand fourteen. Then we added the Supreme Court's traffic reach area on top of that and then analyzed the build condition.
So would you, trying to reflect in this paper, is this the point of traffic, is what it looked like in twenty fourteen under no build and build condition?
Right, perfectly.
At that, at your intersection?
At that intersection, well, for example, eastbound, if we didn't build the project, you'd have a twelve-second delay eastbound with a low...
Eastbound on the left turn lane?
On all of them. It's a one lane.
Well, what does that little English sign?
Well, that, you know, that was, that's a, that's a lane designation, nomenclature that we've used for thirty years, that this...
That definition means a shared right or left turn lane next to a through lane, right?
Okay, that, that's what I'm saying, if you're, if you're an experienced traffic engineer...
I'm just saying, that's what it says, you're right.
Well, you read it correctly.
Oh, I, I thought, uh, English is my second language, so, but we can take me on this. That ended it, okay? All right, so that's what it says, and you've got on each bound, left lane, that little hash mark, right?
No, that's not a left turn lane, that's a shared lane, it's shared with the through lane in the adjacent road.
So you've got a left lane, a through lane, and then a right lane?
No, no, I'm, no. I've got one lane approach, and, and we've used this nomenclature for lane designations for thirty years, and any traffic engineer should know this. And I know everybody who's not a traffic engineer. But the, the, the little greater than sign means it's a shared lane with the adjacent, uh, road. This, this one, in the eastbound, means you have a through left and a right, it's a single lane.
Ah, okay.
It does not mean there are three, multiple lanes.
No, all you're saying is there's only one lane and shared by left turn, through, and right turn.
That's correct. And I use existing geometry in all this analysis, unless I recommended that probably build additional geometry.
So in, in terms of the work that you did in this particular case, if I understand the test form thus far, you did not analyze the bridge?
Uh, analyzed the north and south ramps, but there's no explicit analysis of the bridge.
You didn't, and you certainly didn't look at its, uh, capacity to take on any additional traffic.
I mean, that's not addressed in the report, but the, the D O T understands that there is sufficient capacity there, or they would have commented if they were concerned about it.
Well, we, we understand that the D O T never makes a mistake. Yeah, I understand that.
I didn't say that.
But my, my question...
You're pretty thorough.
You didn't go...
Pretty thorough.
You did not look at the capacity that goes to take on additional load.
No, I didn't need to.
I understand.
I can look at the...
All right, you might be using that terminology to hook it up quickly. You didn't feel it was necessary to look at the lane capabilities on the bridge?
Correct.
Um, you didn't think it was necessary to determine how long vehicles might be stopped at that bridge waiting for other vehicles to turn on, if you want?
There won't be stops if there's, there's...
And nobody's going to need to be backed up behind vehicles turning on the on-ramps on I four?
Oh, turning on the onramps? Yes, I, I didn't like that, I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm glad you're not backed up by, by, by...
Yeah, I didn't like that.
Are you telling us that will not happen?
No, I'm saying, yeah, that will happen, it happens today, you're right.
All right, no further questions?
Okay.
We have a question from the council, this council, you take a break or proceed with questions right now? Okay, the council needs a break, so when we come back from the break, the council will have a question of this witness and then continue with our presentation. The presentation from...
Sit down while this is going on, it's really annoying, we need to pace it, you can go out all the way, it's like you sit down, but it's annoying to us, we need to pace it, right?
I'll discuss it with them.
Thank you.
So we're, we're taking a break, and when the break is back, we'll be back in twenty-four minutes.